It is six thirty six on Monday, February twelfth, two thousand eighteen, and we're gonna call the school committee.
Meeting to order. Um first, we have a we have our consent agenda.
Yes.
Um is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Uh there were four items in this um two sets of minutes and two field trips. Did everybody get a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No.
Good. Okay. All in favor to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Safe as about a half hour.
Yep.
Um with the field trips.
Yes.
I mean, this is very straightforward and clean stuff that we're doing. The senior trip sometimes becomes an issue because of the costing and all that stuff.
Yes. Yep, yep.
If we can find out where we are with that. I know that everybody's excited, but just to keep track of it, to see if we can do anything to to help or whatever.
Yep.
No visitor comments today. Um our student rep is not feeling well.
Oh.
So she's she's out, yeah. Um and uh we're gonna jump into new business. Self-care proposal.
New business, sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
So in your folders, uh you had a proposal for um extending the learning that occurred with the initial uh self-care uh work that was done
Yep.
um based on a a gift um uh by a c- uh community member. And so Sally O'Shea, which I s- I would like to say thank you again. Um because it's really kicked off this whole um learning around mindfulness and helping bring mindfulness to staff um and also to students. And so uh I think maybe um the next part of this uh work uh could be extending out more into uh more classrooms uh with more teachers involved. And so Kate has put together a proposal and I know that uh Deanne's been working uh with her.
Mm-hmm.
So um we're very excited to bring this uh next step forward.
Great. And what is that next step forward?
Okay.
So Deanne, do you wanna talk about it or?
Uh we put together a pilot program to take place in the junior, senior high school. And ideally, it would be one classroom in each grade. So the teacher would be trained um through a f- full-day professional development and then ongoing support throughout the eight-week program with Kate. And Kate would come in and do some modeling in each classroom um and also just again provide support, you know, um so teachers can kinda get together through maybe online webinars um or after-school um just so that they can support each other through the program. And we would do pre and post tests in the form of surveys to and then kinda analyze all the data to see what um how the program fulfilled its hopes and dreams. And so that's gonna be a big part of it because, you know, I know the school committee is um, you know, we are pretty data-driven
That's awesome.
and we wanna make sure that whatever programs we implement going forward work. And so this packet includes the entire eight-week program itself and what Kate would provide through the eight weeks.
Right.
So we would also have um, well, I think I th- I think that's, I'll let you digest that a little bit.
Cool. Wha- what is the timeline for for this?
Um, well, like I said, the program itself is eight weeks. And then we would need probably an additional, I don't know, I'm thinking two to four weeks to take in all the data and analyze it.
Mm-hmm.
And then have Kate come in and summarize the results in maybe some s- some sort of a PowerPoint presentation. Um so the hope is to get this done this school year.
Okay.
Nice.
Um do we have any grants or anything like that for the funding, for the uh for the cost of it?
Thank you.
We are looking into that right now. We uh we are reaching out to the PTO and um we have some other options that we're looking into.
Okay.
Um but we thought it was important to bring it to the school committee now so we can discuss it.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Well, I'm allergic to school committee.
I think one of the things is um, you know, uh we certainly, this falls under the umbrella of health and wellness and our social and emotional learning.
Um.
Um there are some grant uh opportunities both through uh the nurse leader. Um also, I think partnering uh perhaps with um uh police uh who also have some grant opportunities uh for us. Um and we've also reached out to uh local businesses to fund uh pilot programs like this as well. Um so I think uh with approval, we can start that ball rolling and and begin to understand the, you know, where we can sort of pull the the funding together.
Mm.
So what what are we approving? What is the request for?
Uh the pilot program itself.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, because it does require a vote. It's not something that we could just implement in the schools without a school committee vote to do so.
Right.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because it is gonna require, uh you know, just teacher involvement, student involvement, staff involvement.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is this. There is a cost of six thousand dollars for this, and we're hopeful that we can find parts or all of that uh through fundraising or donations or whatever it is.
Right.
More than hopeful.
Mm-hmm.
More than hopeful.
Yes.
So my my question is this. If we approve it tonight, and then even though we're more than hopeful, it doesn't happen, then what do we do uh about the cost of the program?
Well, actually, I am hoping that the vote can be um implementing the pilot program pending
Okay.
um funding.
Okay.
Because clearly, you know, as a school committee member, I'm just as, you know, I'm 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 just as.
No, that makes sense, and thank you for that. That's 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 helpful.
And typically, that's how we'll post positions as well. So we can certainly get the ball rolling, but um it would be pending funding um like we do with all of our grants. So depending on how the funding comes in, then we'll be able to move forward.
Cool. Okay. And one one last question. S- um since we have all these uh classroom teachers involved and staff members, a total of eight, it seems, is this a teach-the-teacher type of model? Can these folks, will these folks be in a position to share that knowledge? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
That's the idea.
That's the next step.
Right.
Okay.
Right? Um so we're looking at six classroom teachers, one each grade, grade seven through twelve.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh the hope is, right, that um this model can be used through teach-the-teacher, you know, t- or train-the-trainer.
Train-the-trainer.
Yeah.
And be implemented district-wide, so it's much more um cost-effective.
Right.
That was actually gonna be my question. Um is high school soon enough, or do we wanna look at this at earlier ages, right?
Right. Well, I think eventually we wanna see it district-wide, right? But the pilot program, we had to start somewhere.
Okay.
Yes.
And we just figured containing it in one building made sense and, you know, it ju- it just seemed like that that was probably the the most logical place to start.
And that's not to say that people that have participated in mindfulness prior didn't at East Meadow or West Street aren't implementing mindfulness. As a matter of fact,
Right.
you know, Bill just did a mindfulness march on Friday. Um and so I think um having this pilot will give us good data around um the what we can expect as results, so that um if we do decide to move it down to uh K tw- K six, um how we can build that program uh for that specific grade level.
Did you accidentally? So the easiest way to uh analyze the data, it's just gonna be a simple one-page survey that that the kids and the teachers um will be completed prior to the eight weeks. And then maybe once during the um program, which is kinda midway through, and then post. And um, you know, that that all still needs to be worked out, but it's it's, we're gonna make it in the 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 simplest form possible so it's easy to analyze and that everybody can look at it uh and review it.
Okay.
So.
And so the school department's taking on the data collection and data analysis. Um so the pilot really truly is for um contact hours with staff and support afterwards of staff observing in classrooms, uh mindfulness uh exercises that are happening. Um so, you know, Kate's time would not be used with, you know, uh data data collection or an analyzing uh the results, but then we would have a conversation about what does it mean uh with her, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there um prior- are we prioritizing um teachers who tend to have a higher number of kids with sp- social, emotional needs? Or is it really like just like a t- like a, how are we prioritizing who's gonna, is it just voluntary at this point?
It's voluntary, yeah.
And are we, is there a thought of sort of in- um including paras?
Uh I.
In that? Cause I would think that a para would need some moments of, I mean, a special needs mom, I mean, should I come? Now, I immediately thought of the paras when I saw this. It's sort of uh natural.
Right. Right. I think if the data reveals that teachers feel, you know, whatever teachers are observing in themselves and their instruction, what students are feeling, certainly, we can bring mindfulness into professional development for paras and what that might look like.
Mm-hmm.
Um so that maybe it's, you know, during their professional development time, which they are asking often for meaningful professional development. If we have data that suggests that this improves teacher practice and student performance, then um it's it would give us good information to say, okay, um let's design and implement a a PD for paras as well.
Yeah, this is a um, the pilot itself is voluntary and random. The hope is that we're gonna have one teacher in every grade. That that would be the the ideal.
Mm-hmm.
But we just don't know how how it's all gonna work out. And we also tried, the goal was to keep this as focused as possible. We didn't wanna do anything that was overly complicated, overly time-consuming, um but we wanted something that was going to be um, you know, that tha- that it was gonna be objective enough that we could get data that was gonna be um quality data.
Hmm.
So.
Yeah, and n- nine, nine through twelve, the lines are blurry anyway, right?
Interesting.
They're. Mm-hmm.
So probably it's gonna benefit more than just one grade. It's gonna be
Yeah.
c- across grades, so.
Right.
This one, this one's really great.
Cool. Do you have any question? Okay, okay. Is there a motion to approve the self-care, what do we call this program?
Pilot program.
But is is it a self-care moments program? Is that what it is? Self-care moments program, uh pilot, uh pending funding?
Yes.
Is there a motion to move it there? Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Questions? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Deanne. Thank you, Cheryl. Moving on to FY nineteen budget.
So I wanted to give the school committee an update on where we are. Um as an admin team, we have a a very rough uh outline of the budget. Um we are waiting on uh the in-kind sheet uh from Chris Martin, town manager. Um and so uh that can have a pretty big impact on the budget. Um so I'm working with him to try and try and get those numbers uh to us. Um but I was hopeful that uh we maybe could schedule a budget-only meeting, um because there are because of how the meetings fall in February and March and vacation, um there's a pretty big gap uh between this meeting and our next uh March meeting. So I was hoping we could have just a a budget only so that I can present uh the superintendent's budget um early in March.
But not next week, right?
No, not next week. It's President's Day.
That's brutal.
Yeah. But also, it's school vacation, so.
It's school vacation week, yes.
Can we do the following week?
Uh we had scheduled a policy subcommittee, so I was wondering, um right now, we have um and I'm certainly happy to do that, uh but you have March fifth open, and then you have March twelfth is a school committee and the twenty-sixth is a school committee.
Okay.
I can do the fifth. I can do the fifth.
I keep Monday free, it's pretty clear, so.
Yeah, me too.
So the fifth is our school committee meeting?
Fifth is open. The twelfth is your school committee. Regular schedule. You have it as the twelfth.
Yep.
I have it as the twelfth.
You have it as the twelfth?
I have it as the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Okay, I, here's here's my suggestion. L- let's have the school committee meeting on the fifth, because that's gonna be a month break if we don't.
The twenty-sixth.
Today's the twelfth, then we're gonna move it to the twelfth. Um I don't have any problem having, personally don't have any problem having another meeting that week or doing a doing the budget session the week after. It just pushes it out a little bit. That's why I I misunderstood what you said earlier, that I thought maybe we could do it the week after next, but the that's, if we can't do that.
Wait, I'm confused. What do you mean a month?
Well, I, well, if we if we do a school committee meeting on the twelfth of March,
Right.
that's a month. Today's the twelfth.
Mm-hmm. Don't we have one on the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Do we? I I was told that we don't.
No.
No, because we had two. W- we had, we had.
We were gonna have one on the twenty-sixth and then we, well, we just changed it to a policy.
But I had one on the twenty-sixth. I had one on the twenty-sixth too. Um, do we wanna just keep the twenty-sixth and use it for budget, or is that not?
Yeah, I have one on the twenty-sixth as well.
That might not be enough time though, cause that's like right when they get back.
Um the the day after school vacation, do you think we would have enough to discuss?
Um, oh, is that why we were talking about maybe not having it?
Mm-hmm.
Um let's not have a meeting just to have a meeting.
No, I agree.
Yeah, do we have real things to talk about on the twenty-sixth? Uh i- if not, is it possible to have a school committee meeting on the fifth then? But maybe have the budget meeting on the twenty-eighth or something, you know, one evening when everybody can be together, but there is enough time, a couple of days at least, to put the uh the visuals and the numbers together?
Right.
I can do that.
Wednesdays are hard for you?
No, Wednesdays.
Wednesdays are good?
Wednesdays are hard for me.
Yeah.
Wednesdays are hard for me.
Like the only day that's good is Monday at three hours with you.
Okay.
Uh w- well, what if we just do the school committee meeting on the fifth and then um the budget on the twelfth?
That works.
And so then we would, I mean, we have another meeting on the nineteenth, right? We'd see a lot of each other.
The other, I mean, the other thing you could consider is just have one meeting on the fifth, and we do budget and our regular meeting.
Okay.
And cancel the twelfth and then come back on the.
And can't, just move the twelfth to the fifth.
I was just gonna ask if we can do that.
I just feel like twelfth gets a little late for you to give us feedback, to go, if there's any c- if there's any question about the budget
Yeah, it is.
or if there's something where you say, no, Cheryl, we want you to go back and rework that. I've gotta bring it back to the team. We've gotta, you know, um.
So let me ask you this, and if the answer is no, it's no. Based on what you already have from the administrative team, is it ready to be shared um now, I mean, not right now, but you know,
Right.
as is, or maybe with a couple of tweaks the next couple of days, so that you don't have to, you know, put too much work into it next week?
S- yep, so we have a district leadership meeting on Thursday, and that is our work on Thursday.
Thursday.
Um is to go back to what we have, make sure that we have um all of the corrections, updates.
Okay.
Um, I think the biggest piece honestly is is the in-kind sheet.
Okay.
Um, you know, that um.
We can make assumptions around that. It's, you know.
We we do, yep, we can. Um but just, you know, so that the committee knows that um we don't have that yet. Um.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so here's another suggestion then. Can we have that budget meeting on the twenty-sixth, since Monday works everyone?
Mm.
We can move our policy meeting to twenty-seven or twenty-eight. And then we have our school committee meeting on the fifth.
Yes.
Okay. Does it work?
Okay. No, the f- wait, the school committee meeting would be on the fifth, or would it stay on the twelfth?
On the twelfth.
Okay.
So, oh, wait, cause you're saying you don't wanna go a month.
Hold on.
Well, I tend to agree. Maybe for March, we should move it, the school committee meetings to the fifth and nineteenth.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it work? Good? Yep, alright.
Move it to the.
The fifth and the nineteenth.
Fifth and the nineteenth for school committee, twenty-sixth is the budget. The twenty-sixth of uh February.
Is the budget.
Alright, that was.
So the twenty-sixth is budget.
Yes, February twenty-sixth, budget only, regular school committee meetings, three five, three nineteen.
Got it.
And I would probably ask then that you keep your Monday, Aprils open, because at some point we'll have to have a budget hearing and all of that, so.
Yeah.
Keep your Mondays free.
In April.
In April.
Okay.
Alright. That's good. Um.
So we have February twenty-sixth with the budget, March fifth,
And nineteenth.
and the nineteenth for school.
Yep, for the school committee. Thank you, Kathy. All good on this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next, we have uh the statement of interest for accelerated repair to MSBA.
Right. Okay, so, um as you know, we applied for an accelerated repair for Granby Junior Senior High School last year. It was denied. Um I did follow up with them this year to see if we were a candidate for accelerated repair for Granby Junior Senior High School and actually discovered that we are not. Um because of the information that was generated and submitted in two thousand and ten, um they uh feel that um Granby Junior Senior High School is uh more uh well-suited for a renovation. Um uh so it would have to go in under the core program. Um, right.
Oh.
So it just means that it's a different timeline. Um much of the information that we've already collected can be used to generate that um submission. Uh so I would, um I just wanted to bring it up that we are not a candidate here for accelerated repair.
Okay. But then we we're gonna pursue it with our capital plan.
Right, so we're pursuing the roof with capital. Um and as you know, we've been having some issues with the gym roof. Um we've had now several, unfortunately, several games that have uh had to have been canceled. We're trying to get to the bottom of why the skylights are leaking. Um it appears to be where the water is coming from, so um keep my hairs crossed that it doesn't rain anymore.
Yeah.
Um but uh.
Any classroom issues?
No classroom issues right now. Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Yeah, I I mean, it's it's kinda interesting that this is MSBA.
Right.
They know that we just built a s- uh a new building, and, you know, based on the funding for that, it's not likely that we're gonna be applying for anything related to renovation or a new building construction. So I don't know why they are dragging their feet, but it would've been nice to get into this program.
Mm, mhm.
They're probably thinking, what is it? Uh what kind of roof do we put on uh on top here? Twenty-year or longer?
Uh nineteen ninety, I believe so. Yeah.
It's a, it's about twenty?
Yep.
So they're thinking then in the next, if we do anything in the next twenty years, they're gonna have wasted their money.
Okay. I mean, you know, they have worked around like East Meadow roofs that have been put on, and then they renovate around that. Um so uh I would be happy to have them either submit a letter as to the specific reasons why,
Mm.
but um basically, when the submission went in in two thousand and ten, um it was that it's not just the roof, it's not just the windows, it's not just the doors, it is the ventilation systems, it is the heat system, it's not just the boilers, it's the actual vent and how the heat is moved through the building. Um and so with that, it's not just repairing a roof, repairing windows. It is actually taking out heat systems, taking out ventilation, and upgrading a significant portion of the building.
Well, we're very well aware of that.
Yeah, I know. I was not when I submitted last year. Now I am.
I I would appreciate something in writing from MSBA, just as not not only to understand their logic,
Okay.
but also uh something in writing would be useful for us
Yeah. Sure.
to be able to use um
Yep. Yeah.
to explain
Mm-hmm.
to residents.
So the response that you just shared with us, that's a great point.
Mm-hmm.
It was just verbal?
Yes, it was just a ph- yeah, it was a phone, they were, and I will say this, they were very helpful.
That.
Um cause I was not aware of the details of why we were denied last year.
Okay.
Um but basically, they have a ton of information on Granby Junior Senior High School because of the proposal that was happening.
Yeah.
What I tried to explain was, our situation has changed. We've built a new elementary school, um our enrollment is down. We we can sustain the instructional program within the building, so there isn't the need for additional space and everything along that line that was um that was requested in the two thousand and ten proposal. So I said, our situation has really changed. He said, well, there's a couple of things that haven't.
Yeah.
And those are the big ones. Uh the basically the.
Well, I understand I understand their position on that, and that makes sense. And again,
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
if we can just explain it to them, i- the reason why we need it in writing is that it can be useful for us to be able to share with with the town
Right. Mm-hmm.
as to, you know, why w- we're not um fitting the criteria for this program.
Mm-hmm. Right. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay, thank you. Advocacy for seventy seventy-five percent reimbursement of circuit breaker.
So um in the latest budget um discussions, um two things have occurred. There's been a reduction, a proposed reduction in circuit breaker, um reimbursement from seventy-five to sixty-five percent. Um for Granby, that means a reduction of uh sixty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Right.
Um and so um what the superintendents um have been working with their school committees on is um advocating the legislators uh and our representatives and senator uh on um fully funding the reimbursement. It's a statute. Uh they are supposed to fund it at seventy-five percent. We budget for seventy-five percent. Um so a reduction mid-year in two thousand and eighteen would be pretty catastrophic to us um in Granby.
Did they do it, or are they thinking about it, doing it?
They're thinking about it. So it's right now, it's in discussion, but it's also, we need to advocate for FY nineteen. Um and that the governor um makes sure that we are fully funded for uh nineteen. So I have um letters like we have written um in the past for the charter school.
Mm-hmm.
Um and uh they are here, and it basically just asks for the full funding um at seventy-five percent reimbursement. And there's a letter to uh Representative Zibek, uh Representative Goldstein Rose, and Senator Lesser. Would you like me to read it into the record?
Sure, please do.
Um, dear representative or senator, I'm contacting you today regarding an important issue facing school districts acco- across the Commonwealth, the adequate funding of special education circuit breaker account, budget line item seven oh six one dash zero zero one two. The full funding of this account assists public school districts in offsetting the costs of students with the most severe disabilities who require highly specialized special education um and treatment. The current appropriation for circuit breaker account is insufficient, and I'm asking you to contact the governor to request a supplemental budget appropriation of twenty-five million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, seventy-five dollars. When the US and, I'm sorry, when the House and Senate developed the current FY eighteen state budget, there were constraints due to declining revenue projections and a reliance on prior year circuit breaker reimbursement claim rates. However, due to the unexpected increase in district reimbursement claims, the current appropriation for the circuit breaker account of two hundred and eighty-one point two million is only providing reimbursement of sixty-five percent of excess cost over four times the pupil foundation budget amount, instead of seventy-five percent over excess cost as is called for by statute. Many school districts, while formulating their FY eighteen budgets, assumed continued circuit breaker support at last year's level. The reduction in funding at the state level has resulted in the need to cut programs and services at the local level. These cuts are occurring in school districts across the state. The lowered reimbursement rate for Granby Public Schools means a reduction of sixty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. As you are aware, this will place a substantial burden on a local operating budget for the school district. The current circuit breaker appropriation is clearly insufficient to meet the needs. The current circuit breaker appropriation is clearly insufficient to meet the needs of students in districts. If left unaddressed, the funding gap will create unnecessary conflict and tension between school districts and families. This also has the potential for increasing costly litigation to resolve these unintended conflicts, thereby eroding the trust currently being established as schools and families work together to meet complex educational needs of students with disabilities. I respectfully request that you contact Governor Baker and ask that he support our school districts and file a supplemental budget to adequately fund the special education circuit breaker account. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. How are we sending it? Uh everybody signs it?
Mm-hmm.
So, you, okay. So you already have a copy for us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there an electronic version of that? Maybe we should send one to um the governor himself and
Yeah.
and and Desi as well, hmm?
Cause then he just uh He was just shouting from the rooftops about an increase in funding.
Yeah.
This is where it's coming from, huh? Hundred and twenty-two million? Clever.
Now, is there maybe a consumer um version of this, you know, that we could email and have families contact representatives?
I think we said that we would do something like that.
Yeah, we did.
And post it on the uh
Mm.
on our Facebook page for people interested, yeah.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't even have to be this elaborate, it's just, you know, don't cut.
Oh. Mm-hmm.
Cause this isn't, I mean, y- the the letter in essence is saying how detrimental it would be to our special education program, but it's not just our special education program, when you cut sixty-five thousand dollars in the middle of the year,
Right. Mm-hmm.
it's gonna impact something else too.
Yes. Gonna have a domino effect.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh how how much activity do we get on the Facebook page?
Not much.
Not much.
Well, I I can share on Good News Grant, well, I really shouldn't do that.
Well, the reason why we don't get a lot of activity, it's because we're not really doing a lot, so I just started, I don't go on Facebook anymore, so this weekend I made note to myself to go on the Facebook page to post things.
So is it possible then, could we, and I know I've asked this question before, send this out as an email blast?
Thank you.
For for parents to contact the representatives with a link, a simple link. You know, I get these things all the time from the organizations that I'm a part of.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to just, all I have to do is click on the link, put in my email address, my name and address, and you know, there's my support. And if we can make it easy for folks to do that.
Well, if you, if we're, if somebody really want, I mean, I I would think that somebody would go to change dot org or something like that and make it easy and petition. The state, I'm surprised that this state doesn't have a a site of its own for people to express their grievances or requests or whatever.
Well, I think we would get a lot of support if we made it easy for parents to do so.
Yeah, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
So the school department can provide information, the school department can't tell people how to vote or how to, so that's where.
Right. Yes. But but I think it's exactly, if you support this.
If you're interested. Yes, yes. Here's a link to.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying is, you know.
Yep.
So I I always love that rule, that's that's a great rule, so people are elected to a position to advocate on behalf of an institution, whatever it is, in this case it's the schools, and we are advocating for it, but we can't, but we cannot tell people what we are advoca- advocating for even though we just signed something, and it's somebody came up with the rule, somebody signed it.
You post it, I'll forward it.
Okay, thank you, we'll do that, pardon.
Alright, that's that's what I'm looking for, volunteer.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, on on Monday in April, we go to the Hill, there is a name for it, we, it's 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 advocates a day,
Just looking for a hero.
you know, day on the Hill, and then we can't really advocate for something that is detrimental to our schools. That's that's, that's the beauty of politics, I guess. Don't complain. Um alright, so next item, well, actually, we're done with our new business, go into old business, we have two guests, if you would like to join us. We have great microphones.
Uh probably closer to the microphones.
Well, if if you come in, it may actually make it, yeah.
Yeah.
Easier.
Alright, thank you. Just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, do you have copies, or do you want me to hand them out?
Uh if you hand them out, I have a, I don't have them with me.
One page, right?
One page.
Yeah.
And before we tear into the document, I'd like to say goodbye to Andrew Stratt. Everyone's familiar, he's moved on, he's with the Sidexo team in Springfield. But I'd like to introduce you to our new food service director for Granby, Ken LaPage joined us, he's here full-time.
Thank you.
Hello, Ken.
On board?
And this is the school committee, say hi.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I just wanna let everybody know, I'm very excited to be here in Granby and uh I'm just looking forward to the partnership with the district, so.
Good to hear, thank you.
So we've spent a couple days driving around and meeting our staff and principals and um the administration, so we're looking forward to get into it. Um and Mark had asked me to present at this meeting, um and it's always an excellent opportunity that I look forward to, to look at the program, successes, its challenges. Uh and I'm well aware that in the past we've provided a seven-page profit and loss report that I think people didn't appreciate reading. Mark and I have our challenges, and then there was a one-page summary. Um however, this is a bid year, uh and the company is um very competitive and hesitant to put out too much data that our competitors could could get. Um I've created this summary report to talk about the program, its successes, its challenges, from a year-over-year review to a year-to-date. Um I've also tried to provide some benchmarks and guidelines. I realize that as we've presented um like a State of the Union address, it's not well-known exactly what the guidelines might be when I talk about food cost or what the labor cost would be. So our partnership with Granby is is has its challenges with enrollment and revenues falling, but successes to exceed this. So at the very top of the page, you, you can see under the key metrics, the enrollment, the total sales have been tracking downward. The net food costs, the wages have also tracked downward. Um and this year, the the elephant in the room is where we projecting to come in with these challenges. We're projecting, right now, I'm projecting we're gonna lose about eighteen thousand dollars at the end of this year. Um that is a slight increase over last year's program loss. Uh that, it does include a little bit of food that was lost from a freezer shutdown. But it makes up quite a bit of ground from the lost revenue and the lost meal counts on a daily basis. And the metrics that are involved in that are are in the next section, the enrollment, tracking down with the meals. However, the good news is the student participation is on an upward trend, and I'll get back to that within the benchmarks and guidelines. Total sales, along with the purchased food, are tracking downward. Dealing with the Chartwells and the purchasing volume that we have nationwide, the purchasing credits coming back to Granby Public Schools are up year-over-year. Not only as a total volume, but as a percentage of meals and a cost back to the students. So when analyzing it a couple different ways, it's all a good story. The food that we're buying through the, through known vendors uh comes back to the school district as volume credits. So that that's at an all-time high. The net food cost is down, hourly wages are down. That's because going into this school year, we're able to eliminate a position. Uh we're also able to restructure a couple positions, um so that uh they're not full-time and they're not benefit-eligible. These employees are still with us, but just in a different capacity. Wages as a percentage of sales, however, remains up because our sales are down. And then the program loss, at this time last year, um we're up twenty-one percent. But we're gonna put a dent into that because of the higher participation. What I'd like to do is go into the benchmarks and guidelines now, so some of it comes into focus. The average cash price of student meals. To create this report, uh I took a couple different uh reports from the School Nutrition Association. Nationwide, they have a benchmark for elementary schools of a breakfast price of a dollar thirty-nine and middle school, high school of a dollar forty-nine. You can see that Granby is slightly below that. And that, those discussions are always a doubles, that double-edged sword, we realize that. Can't raise prices too high, it turns people off, they can't afford it. But too low, when the SNA did their nationwide survey, they found that the average cash price for meals was below the cost of producing meals. That's, that was the genesis of the annual paid lunch equity. When I come forward with the October data and say, the USDA's mandatory minimum is X and we need to consider raising prices, that was the genesis of that. Cash, the cash lunch prices nationwide were two thirty-four and two fifty-seven. Granby, slightly higher than that, two sixty and two eighty-five. I did do some internet trolling to find some neighborhood districts and their, the range of their prices. So you can see their lunches go from two fifty to three dollars between the grades, and their, then breakfast go from a dollar twenty-five to a dollar sixty. So Granby Public Schools is in the sweet spot, we're not at the extreme high. We're not, we're not at the lowest. Student meal participation, for nationwide for the elementary schools, the School Nutrition Association coaches self-op programs that they should be aiming for sixty percent participation, percentage of students buying the meals. Granby Public Schools year-to-date is running a sixty-two percent average, we're above that benchmark. Middle high schools, the range provided to the self-op districts is thirty to fifty percent. Our middle high school is running at a fifty-six percent. More students are buying up the meals. And I don't ha- I don't have the neighborhood district information for that. I wanted to highlight the average sample cost of a type A. SNA has quite a lengthy document to talk about the advantages of buying school lunch, how cheaper it is than producing it at home, the greater variety the student is exposed to in the schools. But for the five components that the USDA mandates have to be offered to the students, the type A lunch can range from a dollar fifteen to two dollars and thirty-seven cents. By balancing USDA commodities, controlling portions, we certainly offer, if a student goes through any of our our lines, we exceed the five component. Students are offered unlimited fruits and vegetables, the, all of the milk varieties that they could take. But our average meal cost year-to-date is only a dollar eighteen. It's a, it's a strong statistic. Labor productivity is also important because as we talk about a break-even and what do we need to serve the meals, we have to operate within the academic schedules for the schools. Massachusetts also mandates Granby Public Schools offers a breakfast program. So it's not a program that we could propose eliminating, we have to have it. However, the meals per labor hour, and that's just a benchmark of equivalence, but they say you should have a twelve to sixteen at your highest. Granby is well below that in our elementaries, because of that higher participation rate, our meals per labor hour benchmark is only at nine. The middle high schools, the range is twenty to twenty-six, and this is for the cook-on-site schools. For the variety that we serve, they give us that range, and we're, we're within that, we're at twenty-five. But we're also at the bare minimum to meet the health codes. I can't have a cashier handling food, cashiers have to stand there, segregated duties. So, we understand the goal of Financial Sustainable Nutrition Program, what's our break-even? If we'd add up the year-to-date costs to operate our program and divide by the average check so far, we'd be just over six hundred meals a day for a break-even point. Right now, we're running in about five hundred and eighty-five, we're a little bit below that. It's about a five percent increase in participation we need to focus on to meet those expenses. But our goal is to continue to drop expenses and simultaneously raise the participation to get, to get over that break-even mark. I think five point eight percent, um Ken and I spoke about this at length today. Um we're bringing in our regional marketing manager to talk about successful programs, see what we're not doing here, what else we can do to do that. We have a regional chef and some purchasing people coming to look at the overall purchasing of the district. Our cost per meal against the SNA benchmark is very strong, but the question is, can can something else be done that might be better? Leave no stone unturned. So there are some other items to consider. Um I expect any day now to get the email from the USDA for the paid lunch equity analysis, where we look at the weighted average of meals uh from the October data to a new minimum that the USDA mandates. That's not out yet, so I don't really know what the mandate would be. If they follow last year's, their their mandatory minimum for a weighted average could be two ninety-five. Our September average was only two dollars and seventy-four cents. And what they stipulate in that paid lunch equity jargon is SFAs need to consider raising the prices to stay competitive with that mandatory minimum because the reimbursements will not subsidize the cash program. But the SFAs can take action by voting not to take action, so it's not guaranteed because we've really kind of hit the high end, I think, of pricing for now, statewide. We're not advoca- not advocating raising prices, I'm just comparing to what the USDA will will come out with. The good news is, Chartwells has increased the purchasing of local produce, fruits, and some meat, some protein, sixteen percent over prior year. More local fruits and vegetables have gotten to the Granby students, it's a great story. We've done a dedicated crop program. We continue to partner with the Franklin County Processing Plant for the flash frozen. So local fruits and vegetables are available to Granby students all ten months of the academic year, not just the month and a half of where the growing calendar overlaps. It's a good story. But it is most likely an added cost. These fi- these these new programs come in at a higher price than government frozen vegetables or just bulk packaged vegetables, frozen vegetables.
I don't, I don't get that, what is local, that dumb phones.
Well, I've spent quite a bit of time with the local farmers, um they've they've made their living over the last twenty years from farmers markets and from the high retail, good for them. Um and they're not coming down off their price point um for these one-stop deliveries. We've tried to make it easy for them, the Franklin County group acts as an aggregator for us. And then our empty Cisco trucks stop by there, bring it right down to the Cisco and then shuttle it out to our unit. So they're not bearing the cost of transportation, it's built into our relationship with Cisco. But it's still coming in, obviously if I use government commodities, that's a free product. Even, but if I buy a Cisco thirty-pound box of peas and carrots, it's probably eighty-six, ninety cents a pound. These frozen vegetables start at a dollar sixty. So we don't use them as primary fruits and vegetables on our menu. You won't see a hotel pan of local bell pepper strips. We work that into pizza, we work it into stromboli, soups, stews, but we're able to get broccoli, cauliflower, carrots, uh local potatoes. They made us a couple batches of applesauce at the end of the season. Um and we just work that into our program to not accelerate the food cost. But it is, does come in at a higher cost. We'll continue analyzing our purchasing to drive that, uh drive the rebates to the district. Right now, we're seventeen point four percent higher than prior year. Based on the meal per labor hour, meal, meals per labor hour guideline, there isn't much more meat on the bone to trim away before we affect service. Within the academic schedule, we have to get all of our students through the meals within seven minutes on average. And then per health code, I have to have a cashier, I have to have a server, sometimes I have to have two servers, so we
I'm sorry, I was just, I was gonna say, so so what is, what are some of the possible solutions, Mike? Cause right now I'm looking at, it's like twenty to forty-five cents. I'm sorry, um it's like a dollar eighteen we're saying for the food on a plate, and then it's a dollar forty or a dollar sixty-five per se for the labor permit for that same meal, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's that's the way I read it, this sheet.
The approximately. We look at, are we serving, you know, production time, so the right people coming in at the right time, produce the food, get it in the warmer, get it served, and then call it a day and punch out, go home. Um we've struggled with getting part-time workers, uh the majority of workers want Um we've struggled with getting part-time workers, uh the majority of workers wanna come in. Um and I think U S C A, US uh USA Today had the schedule, where have all the food service workers gone? Um and their analysis said they've gone to the casinos with the benefits, it's very difficult, I have very few districts that have a full labor schedule. Um usually they're running with some sub workers that have not been put through security background checks. Um and that's not our preference, but it's it's a challenge. We do wanna um have the optimal labor schedule to meet the needs, but not have too much labor and and raise that cost.
Because to me, that's the 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 single biggest expense you have right here, right, is is the labor.
Labor loses, yeah.
Did you say earlier that break even is six hundred?
It's about six hundred and eight right now.
Six hundred and eight, and we have five eighty-five, you said?
Yeah.
So it's about fifteen.
Twenty students a day.
Twenty twenty meal difference? So twenty meal, let's let's go with twenty meal, I went to fifteen.
Oh, six hundred and eight meals a day, current is five seventy, there's a thirty-eight meal per day.
Thirty-eight meal, so let's just uh go with thirty-eight meal.
You're looking at, I mean, correct if I'm wrong, but one of the ways you could get through this is to look at what are we serving? That we might wanna change to entice more of the students to buy the lunch.
We look at each time, we do an analysis, uh not only do I look at participation on a monthly basis, I look at it as on an entree basis. So I might, French bread pizza might be more acceptable and bring in more students than regular um cheese pizza.
Then again, you can't serve that every single day too, but I mean.
It you you're actually right, it make the French bread pizza may have a higher food cost. Um so it s- some have benefits, some don't, we have a purchase.
Some of it comes down to training, you know, just training the staff, getting the food to look more restaurant quality, you know, that kinda stuff, so those are things we look at as well.
Um what portion of our meals are reduced rate or free?
Uh Granby, I believe it's about thirty-five five thirty-five point five percent. The served meals, I don't have that data. The that's the applications per enrollment.
Do you know how much uh reimbursement we're getting per meal?
Mm-hmm.
Reduced?
Reduced is two eighty-six.
Okay, so.
The federal reimbursement?
Yeah. So we're getting more than the meal itself if it's reduced, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um so thirty-five, more than one third of our meal is basically paying for itself, that's what we're seeing. So this whole cost is that we're looking at, that is going beyond uh by a by what is it, eights eighteen thousand, you said, projected? Is for two thirds of the meals. We are incurring that much extra cost.
Right, and that's just lunch, we do offer the the breakfast program, the reimbursement doesn't come close, that might be a dollar sixty is the federal reimbursement, um. So off the daily average breakfast skews that, it doesn't even compete.
Okay. Um so when you started, you gave us some benchmarks for for rates?
Mm-hmm.
And then I think you said that we're at a point where we can't raise prices. So a couple of questions on that, who who makes the recommendation for price increases in our in the context of our program?
In our relationship, I would do the analysis off when we get the USDA guidance, I pull the October data. Which I've already looked at, and that's the two seventy-four average. At that point, we have to consider a cash in in increase. Um and they've raised their mandatory minimum about four percent, which is why I did this. So that if they do it about four percent this year, their mandatory minimum might come close to two dollars and ninety-five cents. That's twenty-one cents above our average, we can't, I don't. You know, I don't think that's a sustainable increase before you turn so many people away and you hurt your program.
Yeah, so um that may be the case.
Mm-hmm.
But since I understand, that's what you said, I think, that you make the recommendation, we never really had the conversation even. As to whether some type of price increase could help us alleviate that eighteen thousand projection that you have. So we are again in the middle of the year and we're looking at a projection that is well beyond what we budgeted. So another question is, what what was the uh enrollment projection uh for this year compared to last year?
The enrollment for this, the enrollment number was kept flat year over year, we did not.
Why would we keep enrollment uh projection flat, given that year after year it's going down and D E C has numbers uh?
It was not considered in this this renewal, we did not breach that topic.
You know, that that's fine, but I I I mean. You tell me whether this is unreasonable, that in a school district that's been losing uh students.
Mm-hmm.
We did not consider that there will be any loss of students this year when we came up with our uh school lunch budget?
Uh it was discussed, it was not included in the.
Who who discuss who discussed that?
I reviewed it with Mark.
Okay. So for next year, we go with the projections that we have on D E C website, correct? And when I look at it, I see a number that is seventy students or so fewer compared to last year. But we don't include those in our lunch projections?
I mean, when we got the projection in, it came with a break even that was s- higher than what we had for the year before. So I mean, it was one year renewal with a projection that I think it was like sixteen thousand, so. Um I think when we had the conversation, there were there was a certain expectation that that enrollment was part of the reason why we were gonna see a drop. Um in the profitability.
I'm not sure I understand that. So we assumed that it was gonna be flat enrollment when we knew that it was gonna go down. I mean for w- let let's just. Uh. Split the causes of our enrollment decline this year, for instance. We knew that there were so many students that graduated and the incoming uh senior class wasn't as big. If for nothing else, if we kept everything flat, I think it's simple math to look and say, you know what, so many students are leaving, so many students will replace them, we have a gap of about thirty. So if I knew nothing else about what was gonna happen in this district, I knew that we were not gonna have thirty seniors that we had last year. And where I'm going with this is that every year we we seem to be having the same conversation, that there is some aspect of the projection. That is putting us already in the hole from the year's beginning. That's not, in my mind, that's not budgeting, that's basically deficit budgeting, which is not budgeting, because we already knew this. It could have been part of our budget, right? And we could have responded to that as to whether it's something that we can we can handle, we can uh undertake as a district or not. We almo- always make it look like it's a surprise, there's a projection and things are not going according to some plan. And then we're we're in the in the hole, last year we had the token ten thousand, which was still the hole, this year we're eighteen thousand, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know, I I I don't know how how we are supposed to fix a pr- uh program. That is always projecting, always projecting deficits.
Well, and I understand, um I believe the good news is this is most likely the last year of this conversation. The logistical changes, I understand, will happen with the school consolidation would permit the program to be break even or better. I don't have final logistics, I mean, service schedules and some um considerations to do projections. Uh but just the labor savings, condensing the schools should bring this program back to break even and probably higher. Because with the newer school, I would anticipate a higher participation rate.
Um how much are we paying individuals who are serving uh food at West Street for instance? What is the what is the cost of labor at West Street?
But they're probably eleven to fourteen dollars an hour, something like that.
Total annual, what does it come up to, do you know? Where I'm going with this, is it really going to make up for eighteen thousand dollar difference and more? Just because we brought everybody now to the new building?
You, it's gonna be about that lo- about about that loss, yeah?
About eighteen thousand?
I would say, you know, a full-time worker um with taxes and benefits and if they c- uh I'm sorry, taxes. And if they take the health insurance, is probably a fifteen thousand dollar person. And there's one and a half um F T Es, full-time equivalents at that school.
So so you're not gonna need. Just as many to do the two new schools because, I mean, it's not on a student by student basis? Because there's gonna be more more students in this this one building, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you're still able to cut that labor down by that much? Cause I would have thought it would it would come down some, but you'd still, did you still have the same number of people you have to be?
Those are some of the specifics I don't have, because it depends on number of service waves, size of the um each wave. I mean, serving two hundred people is easier than serving four hundred people in a ten minute period. But I would anticipate running with a full-time worker at the East Meadow and then one or two. Uh part-time workers coming in to just serve the food and cashier.
I ju- I just, I I thought we we discussed it before.
Yeah, and so that was some of the projection of um how to actually have appropriate uh furniture in the new cafeteria. You know, are we gonna be able to combine service wave, so maybe um kindergarten and grade one get served together, two and three come together, four and five. Maybe, you know, so um that's the work that Bill's doing now uh to figure that out. So that we can lower some of the cost of serving the lunch at the elementary school.
I I just thought that it was, and maybe I misinterpreted some other topic, and we had to, there wasn't gonna be that much savings there? Because there was still the same number of students that needed to be fed in that in that same amount of time, and it may have been something I misinterpreted.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I wouldn't, just broadly, I would anticipate one worker there to start the day, start cooking the food. Uh and then supplemental workers coming in just for the service period alone, but not there. And then any bulk items can now easily be produced out of here and shuttled over, walked over. And that's the tomato sauce the day before, um cooked pasta, something like that, depends on the menu. But it's a, that's a beautiful kitchen, um what we call lots of firepower, lots of holding uh capabilities. Uh so there's no limitation to the facility.
You know, I think going back to Emory's point about budgeting at the beginning of the year and taking into account the decrease in the number of students, I'm still a little confused. Um is that is that how it's been in the past? Or was it this only this year only where it wasn't taken into consideration?
Um rarely is it um taken into consideration, it's not really. And I and I realize this district has had a significant decrease year over year, but since it's a little bit of a moving target. Um many districts run with a po- you know, they try and budget with a a population um data. But the enrollment at the start of the year comes in higher, so they they. If I were to forecast off the population, it would be a significant subsidy for the program. We're waiting to see what the enrollment is in September is a is a truer um process.
The problem with that is, again, it's simple math.
Mm-hmm.
You're telling us that you're short by about thirty meals?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty thirty is the number of students that grad- that is the gap between the graduating class and the new class that replaced it. So it's not, it it's not really something that we should not have foreseen. I. Forecasting requires looking at history.
Mm-hmm.
If we're not using that and we're just gonna make assumptions and the assumption is that things are gonna be, we would love your forecast for our own enrollment.
Oh, I understand, but we also don't.
Uh but it's, I mean, the again.
I wouldn't take that en- that enrollment drop and just roll that forward, it's our job to drive that participation. That's why I was very happy to reveal that the participation is higher than the benchmark and it's higher than the year over year. Um our participation last year was much lower because of the renovation at East Meadow. Very happy to see it rebound and actually come back stronger than it was two years ago. It's a good story, the program that's offered and the and the students are enjoying the food.
I agree, tho- tha- those are really good stories and I do like to see those those numbers increasing. Um. I think it's just, it's a very sensitive area for us because.
Oh, I realize that.
Um you know, it accumulated over the course of many years and what, you know, ten thousand dollars in one year may not seem like a lot. But you multiply that by several years and.
But that's one reason why I wanted to also show the five-year trend of food costs and labor costs, because they haven't been stagnant, they've been decreasing. We're aware of the the challenge the districts had. Um I can't make the subsidy go away, but if. We've tried to partner with the district and drive that, drive expenses down wherever we can. And simultaneously, something like the purchasing credits, drive those upwards. Where we, if we can, there are three grants that are out there now for different dairy programs and things, so we can grab one of those, that would benefit the program.
And how likely is that?
I've had six districts apply, one is heard back, five haven't heard. Um I think unlikely nowadays, more than ever unlikely, because so many districts are on district are running a deficit. So so everybody's applying. I think there's greater competition for any money.
I again, just you know, going back to the numbers, if i- if I were to play the statistical happiness game, yeah, if I looked at these individually, they may mean something. But in a year where you're saying that the net food cost is down by seven percent, hourly wages are down by uh four percent. Your total meal decline actually is less than the enrollment decline, which means a lot of students that remain, they kept on buying food and more, correct? The simple, the simple look at the enrollment could have given us better projections. And we would have been in a better position to have this conversation earlier in the year, as opposed to, what is this, mid mid February? When you are saying in three months, you're gonna come back and you're gonna say that we're we're in the hole uh by eighteen thousand dollars. And this is a great conversation, but then at that time, we're gonna go in front of the town and tell them that, you know what? We are the same guys who told you last year that we uh got everything under control and this year we have eighteen thousand dollars uh gap.
You you understand that.
I mean, for us, it doesn't it doesn't end right here.
I I understand, I I understand. But I also mean to say, I there are enough moving parts that I don't believe you can also say a conversation about raising prices would. It it would, it may decrease the def- the deficit, also may accelerate the deficit. And that may drop participation and make things and just snowball, I don't know. That part of this is a a shell game, because. You know, when we talk about the food costs, it's being more than aggressive with the with the state to get the commodities in on time. Um because that's free money for the for the school district, what's on the list on the website often isn't available, uh so we scramble for that. Um I understand, we don't take this lightly, and I'm sorry, we're in this position uh annually. But much of this is driven by the 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 falling enrollment. Um and I made the call to the state to understand the the Massachusetts breakfast program. Because most of my districts are in Connecticut, I wanted to be sure before I put this in front of the committee. Um and it deals on the percentages of the free reduced per uh the enrollment. So breakfast is mandatory, because if it's not carrying its weight, if I'm not getting that reimbursement that you recognized. We should have the discussion whether we wanna continue the program or not.
Which program is that?
This is the breakfast in all the schools.
Breakfast.
Now, and I realize it, it helps the students um be better prepared for learning. But if we're talking about financial sustainability, we should at least have the discussion to have the program or not.
Uh we should, and and we did not, so.
Well, we can't, because the state told me it's mandatory, so it goes right back to the beginning where.
No, that's what I'm saying, I mean, just, you know, that that's moot, you're basically, we're discussing something that is moot, if we can't, I can't have the conversation, why even bring it up, right?
Right. Mm-hmm.
So um okay. So what is what is our path forward here, other than just hoping that next year something magical will happen because we're collapsing? I I I will tell you this, I have no confidence whatsoever that next year this is gonna be that much different. I'm sure there will be some reduction because we're bringing one labor uh up here and there may be some difference there. But based on our history, I have no confidence that we're not gonna talk about some deficit next year, there will be another reason. We're not gonna have foreseen something else and all that, so until I see it, I'm on the on the non-believer's side, that's that's one. Um the other thing is. You you mentioned earlier that, you know, this is all we can see because you don't wanna give, you know, some of the numbers for uh. Uh competition reasons, if there is such reason, we actually have other ways of looking at these numbers. Uh we can call it, you know, competition reasons, whatever it is, we can ask our attorney and we can have that. It doesn't make any sense to me that we are paying for a program, but all we can see is something that you can share with us and we can't really go beyond that. Because there are some uh competition concerns.
I'm I'm gonna provide Mark that summary that Andrew. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna provide Mark that summary that Andrew did. Uh the two, the one-page, two-column. Um and Mark's more than hap- more than willing, capable to share that. It was just in this public forum, the company wasn't interested um for freedom, fear of freedom of information activity.
You know that whatever's shared with us becomes public domain, right?
I am, I am the middleman, I don't, I don't.
Just, just, just to let you know so that, you know, there's no uh misunderstanding there.
So I just have one more question. You said, you did talk about increasing um the number of sales, right? As, as one possible.
Solution?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Ho- how, how quickly can you have something that you could see this year in that?
Uh it happens with the weekly menus, it can happen with table tents in front of the students. So that they know what, you know, if there's a high popular item, it's coming on the menu. We're looking for new methods to communicate to students, to get them in, um.
I guess my question is, um, is there any way that we could see some offset to the prediction you just gave us of eighteen thousand by the end of the year? If, if you were to find some, some way to increase the, you know, these sales, is that, is that possible?
Mm-hmm.
Cause I ju- I just know now, it's like the end of, or it'll be the end of February by the, by the time. Um the kids get back from school next, you know, after next week, but.
Mm-hmm.
And I know there's just not a whole lot of lead time to, to do that market analysis or the marketing analysis that you were talking about, so.
The, there, there will be no wasted time with an analysis, we're bringing in our mar- our regional marketing manager. Um to meet with the new director, but uh bring resources, tools, tricks, whatever he's had elsewhere. To increase now, being already an, uh ahead of the benchmark, um it's a little bit of guesswork how much higher I can push this participation. But again, if I could push it two points but drop the expenses uh any way possible. We're talking to another district to, they have an access to su- some commodities. So we can trade some commodities that they have for items that are popular in, in Granby. And with a little bit of paperwork, you know, that's free money. It's not available, it may not be available under our commodity umbrella, um but there are, there are legal ways to make that trade with them and bring that benefit to, to Granby. Nothing's off the table.
Hmm. So, um, w- w- one last and I will turn it to everybody else for their finals. Um and i- if you can't answer, that's fine too. You ha- you said you have six dis- districts that you are uh servicing?
I have, I have more, about sixteen.
And more, sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
In our area, um, is everybody losing?
Yes, and, and.
For all schools.
I probably have, out of the sixteen, through three states, um five that are.
How about in Massachusetts?
Profitable, both, I oversee East Hampton and Granby.
Oh, okay, so two, okay.
Yes, and they're in their same boat, falling enrollment, um loss of revenues. Because it's, it's a little bit of everything, it's not only, it's the cash price, families have less money, so my à la carte sales are down. Uh simultaneously, the state's healthy food guidelines tighten what I can actually sell to the students. Not that I wanna go back to Snickers bars and, and canned soda. But the beverages are really down to the flavors of milk, um low-fat milk, and then flavored water, hundred percent fruit juice. Can't really sell any other beverages. Um, you know, snacks have to meet certain criteria, the chips are baked. The nutrition value of our snacks, you cannot buy in a supermarket. It's a different structure that's not available to the public. And some of it turns the students off, some buy just out of lazy consumerism, um but it's a different nature. Uh but, you know, catering sales, districts don't have any of the catering, there's no outside catering. We look for, we had discussions today about alternative meals. Are there any daycare, senior centers, somebody out there that we could produce meals here? Um that ben- the district would somehow receive the benefit either through the, the purchasing credits or uh pricing correctly. Um and drive the revenues for Granby Public Schools. And we just, you know, the market's a little dry.
And out of the five or so districts that you said are turning a profit?
Mm-hmm.
What are they doing differently?
Um, three of them I know have had enrollment increases. Um Stanford, Connecticut's one, people just seem to be moving into that town. Um, the other is a single elementary school district. Um and when I say they're turning a profit, this will be the third year where they make thirty-eight hundred dollars. They're right on the razor's edge, but the, their service schedule permits me in that school just to have one and a half workers. So the labor percentage of sales is very, very low. But there's no, no significant difference in, it's really enrollment, no big difference in the costs. Uh I'm glad to say Granby's food cost is competitive with all of the districts. If I have somebody that's running two, I have one that runs an eighty-four cent, but only because they seem to get an extra state grant for fruit and vegetables. And that district's small enough, the five thousand dollars makes a difference. Um but I haven't seen any of those grants available in Massachusetts yet. We'll go after them, but I haven't seen them.
This is all very dis- disheartening.
One of the districts, and, and Granby won't qualify, but we, we actually have five school districts that have gone off the school lunch program. They've decided to abandon the program, they still serve lunch, breakfast and lunch. They cover the cost for any free or reduced student. Um but the, it just in population area uh carries, th- they can carry like a five dollar and fifty um average check for lunch in the high school. Where Granby wouldn't be able to cover, make up that cash.
No way.
Yeah. So the districts are, again, nothing's off the table, what can we do um to alleviate the subsidy?
Are you providing meals, like for council on aging in other districts, or senior discounted meals?
Um I do, duh, 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 um, nothing for the elderly.
Okay.
Um, I, I have one district that does uh two kindergarten sites. We drop off about forty um small sandwiches for them at a catered price. We, it's not on an eight-inch robi roll, it's on a s- small prun- but, or small uh roll. And, you know, I think those lunches are about three dollars, three fifty each. Um but we're willing to, you know, anything we can, if it's a milk program, that they, we can get them into. Um even down in Weathersfield, Connecticut, we almost partnered with the Salvation Army out of one of their kitchens. Um and believe it or not, the state then turned around and said no. It, it wasn't part of the original contract RFP, so it couldn't be opened up now because it would be a significant change and we'd have to go out to bid again.
Have you considered um any other areas in our town?
Andrew has looked into it and called whatever groups.
We have Children's First, we have, I know there's another pretty big daycare center right on two oh two.
I can, I can certainly have Ken make calls again, but I know Andrew did go down a roster and he worked with Rose um for any groups. And I don't think an- they uncovered a group.
Hmm.
Need me think of something, it slipped my mind, I'm sorry.
How, how do you, uh, do you and how do you measure waste?
We, w- the constant measure is as the cost per meal. Um, we have a program that's coming on board for, in the high school back of the house where they actually measure um food waste on a daily basis, uh as they break down onions and peel carrots and um any of the food production. Weigh that and then the next time, the expectation is the next time they handle carrots, hopefully that waste is a little bit less. And then that's charted, um weighed at the end of the production period. Um and tracked and then put on a, put on the wall on a weekly basis so the staff can see, hopefully they're trending in the direction that waste gets less. But we're stuck, keep in mind, there's a little bit of, um, our hands are tied where we have to provide the five components for the students to choose. Um so it's not as if I can eliminate the choose, I think the Granby students are happy, shown by the high participation rates with the selections that are out there. And I wouldn't wanna get too, you know, go back to canned fruits, canned vegetables.
No.
Um, I, that's not the kind of program I would wanna eat, I'm happy with the program we have, but we do measure it. And I do expect the directors to look at it, we look at purchasing volume, any changes there, we look at changes in inventory volume. And, but most of all, it's cost per meal compared to other districts, and that's what I do on a monthly basis.
Cost per meal converted to cost per meal based on the items or?
Uh I, the per, of, or food used, beginning inventory plus purchases minus ending, divided by the meal served. And that's where you, you get the dollar eighteen or so.
Okay, so.
And does that fluctuate, it tells you how much is being not used?
If there wa- if, if there was a lot of waste that month, I would see a jump, even pennies.
Right, you see, you see it in terms of totals.
Mm-hmm.
But how do you know what is really consumed, what is not? Is that, do you itemize it and keep track of what's thrown away?
Yeah, that's under production records. Well, production records tell me, um, items taken.
They produce what they serve.
I don't have any control over food consumed. Once it passes the cashier, I'm not to have a hand in it, I can't, I can't really steer the students into eat this, not that.
No, I understand that, but if you have ten bread rolls left.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, you're throwing it away, do we know that you, we threw away ten bread rolls?
Yes, there, all of that is written on a daily production record, which includes any food in the kitchen.
Okay, so whatever we throw out, we keep track of it?
Yeah, and that's actually tied back into, um Andrew just went through the, the state audit. And part of what the state does is they pull, they tell you what week they're gonna audit. And those daily production records are tied back to the POS system. So let's say, you'd say in the production record, I sold two hundred hamburgers. We expect to see a hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty hamburgers cooked, two hundred served, twenty left over. What the USDA wants to make sure is that you have two hundred run through the cash register, not a hundred, cause that would mean you're overclaiming. But not three hundred, because that would be irresponsible and they, and that would be noted in their response of the audit.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you both.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Ken.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Yep.
Okay, next we have strategic plan and review.
Uh so we are still making progress, uh our next meeting is, uh Kathy, when's our next strategic planning today?
Twenty, twenty-seven, I think. Seven, yep.
Seventeen? Twenty-seven, yes. Um so we are hopeful to re, um revisit our action steps for each of the strategic objectives, um and get feedback. Uh we are gonna share strategic objectives at school councils, uh to get feedback on, on the objectives. And um hopeful for a final, final version soon.
Is that the final piece?
The action plan, yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, or action steps. It's coming together really well, mm, we'll say that.
Good.
All right, then we are on to budget FY eighteen.
Uh FY eighteen budget, I have put in the drive. Um overall, the budget is tracking according to plan with the exception that we have the outstanding um items that are going to the special town meeting um tomorrow. Those would be necessary to be approved to keep us really within budget and on budget. Um through the course of, of January, we have fifty-one point two percent of the budget expended at this point. Um so we are more than halfway through the year with fifty-one percent of the budget expended. Um right now, we've been focusing on the budget development for FY nineteen. But I need to go through here and make a few adjustments to some of the budgeted items, like, um like we talked about where we need to adjust some of the lines that are consolidated in, um some lines that need to be split out for the zero budget lines that we're expending, like the admin contracted services. That's, that's combined with um the TMS management solutions line, it needs to be broken out. Um the tech management contracted services, that was summer help that's budgeted in the um, the tech manager, tech management district info, so we'll do a few of those split outs. And then the other thing I was talking to Sped and to our accounts payable person about is in the, if you, if you notice, one of the lines that's way over is the um out of district tuitions. Because we need to be putting those into the two forty grant now that they are, the two forty grant is approved. And right now, those POs are still sitting in the local budget and we need to move them so that we fully spend the two forty grant like we did last year.
Questions?
You said fifty-one percent?
Yeah.
And where were we this time last year?
Uh let's see if I have that.
Here we are.
I usually have all of them. Oops, FY seventeen. expenditure results. And that's of. February twenty-eighth. We'd expended fifty-three point eight five. So we've expended a little less this year than last year to date.
Is there any particular line item that is causing that?
Uh I know, it's the overall expenses through the budget, I can't point to any particular line item that would be doing it.
Okay.
Is there anything that's jumping out at you that's causing any pause or concern that we need to know about?
We froze the budget in September.
Yeah. I mean.
That gave me great pause.
No, I mean, the, no, the big concern is, is that the un- unanticipated um cost that.
For the vote tomorrow.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Which is worth mentioning, right?
Right.
Yeah, is it four artic- four?
Four articles, yes.
Four, yeah.
Totalling, um roughly.
One hundred and ninety thousand dollars, yeah.
A little less, one eighty-four, I think.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So it would be helpful if, um, people show up?
I did send out a connected.
I got it, yes, thank you.
And an email, yes. Um so, I will try texting in the morning, I don't wanna inundate people, but.
Is there any, any other social media platform that it needs to be on or?
It's on Facebook, it's on the website.
Yeah. It's on Granby Town Meeting Facebook page as well. Um and just sort of a copy of the warrant is posted on the Good News Granby, but do we tweet, do we?
I can tweet, yes.
You know, just to make sure that we, you know.
Yes.
Since Deanne doesn't use any of them.
Yes. I got the email.
We could Snapchat, but it'll go away right, right after.
Yeah, um, tomorrow, I mean, we've done it several times already, but tomorrow and beyond. We have to continue to differentiate between what's unanticipated and what was in our budget.
Yeah.
Cause I can't imagine that some folks are not thinking that, you know, how come this wasn't in your budget?
Mm-hmm.
It's because we found out about all these changes when school opened, or right before. We vote for our budget all the way back in uh d- June, the budget that we submit is even before that.
Correct.
So we don't know what's gonna happen and the students come in during summer and their circumstances change, especially related to special education and uh vocational placements. There is a law for each one of them that requires us to provide those services.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and, and, and that's what, that's what it is. So, um, so that's, that's hopefully what we can also have the opportunity to explain tomorrow at the uh special town meeting and, um.
And again, which is why it is so important that Circuit Breaker be fully funded at seventy-five percent.
Right.
Um because this would just be another unanticipated expense that was being pushed down to the local level, um.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think I said it, but if you can send me the electronic version of that letter, I would like to send one to the governor's office and uh another one to Desi.
Would you like me to, um, maybe before we leave, uh do a.
Trent, Trent another one?
Commery, right.
Yeah, there's a, there's some language there that is urging our elected officials, if there's a way to remove that and make it.
Right. Okay, and when we break for executive session, I'll go make a, a few adjustments and then you can also.
Okay, that would be great, then we can all sign it and send it, that would be awesome, thank you. And then we'll look into opportunity, make it available for, for Robin, who is interested in sending it.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Robin. All right. Alright um Okay so I think that's all. Is there any question for Mark around FY eighteen?
Can I bring up one more business office item?
Absolutely.
Um 'cause it's it was put in in the um in your folder. And it's basically it's procurement procedures for the nutrition program.
Mm. Yes. Right. I saw that.
So and and we actually need a vote of school committee to approve that we would have procurement procedures because as part of the audit as Mike mentioned the audit um one of the things that's a requirement is that we have procurement procedures. So they give a sample procurement procedures to use. And we have to report in the audit that that school committee is adopting them and that we will follow procurement procedures for purchases and food service.
Is this something that we've done in the past because this didn't look familiar to me.
Wouldn't it?
No I think it's I think it's a new requirement. And Granby hasn't had them so we just need to fill in in ourself as the as the food service authority and uh
Send yeah. And what is the term on this?
Um I don't know that it's a term. I mean it's basically procedures. It's basically saying you would you know you adhere to go out to benefits or
Oh this is something like policy.
Yeah. It's basically
'Cause the first part is about you know conflicts of interest and all that stuff which is fine.
Right.
Rest of it I um the the bid procedures I I don't know what that really means.
Right.
I mean I tried to understand uh what it may mean at the end of the day. But um you do you know what evaluation used bottom line means? Is it are they looking at profit or wh- what is what does that mean?
Right. What page you want?
Uh this is page I have no idea. Page three.
Page three.
There's a there's a table and there are things I just assumed that it was based on profits against profit as opposed to revenue or something like that so.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright so we have to vote for this? Is that what it is?
Yes. Note to adopt the procedures so that we have procurement procedures.
Okay. When when is this needed by?
Well it would nice be nice to do as soon as possible because we need to submit it with the with our response to the audit so
Can we just vote on it now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
'Cause I can't submit it unless I say it's approved.
Alright I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
One second.
Any other questions? Alright all in favor to approve please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else that you wanted to raise or include in our next agenda? Okay we're meeting on February twenty-sixth for budget only. February fifth and nineteenth are our next school committee meeting days. I'll post them on uh Facebook hopefully if I get on. Um with that we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts general law chapter thirty-eight section twenty-one part A three to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call please?
Me and Payne Rakowski. Aye. Jennifer Curran, aye?
Amri Avan, aye.
Yeah Mike Simpson, aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.